Alright, I'd like to call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for RSA 198, colon, 2, 0 dash B to accept the CARES Act grant monies. I'd like to start that hearing by making a motion to accept and expend all CARES Act grant monies received.
I'll make a motion.
For a second.
Alright.
Thank you, Danz. Anybody have any questions? I know we've discussed this. This is basically a formality. I don't know if you want to review.
Yeah.
If you want to review the funds that we got and how they were expended.
Yep. We have currently received sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars for the CARES Act grant. And we probably allocated, if not spent, all of that. And we have probably twice as much expenses. You know, it was supposed to go for PPE, cleaning, you know, getting our schools open, technology, laptops, Chromebooks, personnel. We had to hire extra personnel, like the bus monitors, some extra custodial staff. We put in some touchless faucets. So any expenses related to COVID and reopening our schools, that's what we've been using the money for. Again, we probably, we have spent more than that. We're hoping, like every other school in the state, that there's going to be more money out to the schools. But right now, I think Judy's been asked two or three times in the last three weeks to give estimated updated expenditures, because they are trying to get more money for the schools. You know, there's a bunch of money that came into the state, but they're just trying to figure out who needs it. The hospitals didn't need as much as they thought they would, so now they're going to try to reallocate. And hopefully, we'll get more. Because right now, the balance has to come out of our budget.
Right.
So.
The tents, that's not covered under.
Tents, no. I mean, I accounted for that, but no, that's not.
No, I manage priorities.
That would, that would be an expenditure that would be.
So anything that's, anything that would qualify under CARES Act funds were coding and not, and putting them aside so that we could get.
I'm keeping track of those. I'm putting as much to the sixty-nine thousand that we've received in there. You know, we've already got all that approved through the state and put in our budget for that, but we're still keeping track of everything. So if we do get more money, I can just shift it over.
Thank you, Danz.
Great.
I know it must be a nightmare for you.
Anybody have any questions? Does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding the CARES Act funds? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Abstentions, and that motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of September twenty-third, 2020.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Thank you, Danz. Do you have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Jay. Anybody have any questions or corrections, changes? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Abstentions.
Abstained.
Thank you, Joe. And that motion carries. The next item on the agenda, we have a public request from Paul Schurtewan. Did I say that right, Paul?
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Paul's requested fifteen minutes to address the board on comprehensive support and improvement programs. And I thank you for sending over the materials and events. The floor is yours.
Great. Thank you very much. Like you mentioned, I sent over some material on the comprehensive support and improvement overview. I won't be going into a lot of these things, because there's just too much material to go over, but I went over the overview. The proposed literature or pamphlet from Demonstrated Success, who's a contractor that implements this program for the state. There's also another one called WEF Ed, which education. The next piece of information in that packet is a natural proposal from Demonstrated Success for thirty-two thousand dollars for the proposal and services they provide. The next page, virtual support for schools, is additional support that they would receive for that package. Then I have a number of test scores. I'm not going to really go into those very much, except for superficially, which brings us to how this process started for me. I think it's, I don't think it's in any dispute at all that we have very, very low test scores for the primary schools, especially these ranked according to SchoolDigger.com, is ranked one ninety-two out of the two thirty-two primary schools. By any measure, we were very low ranked. And we were in this situation, a little history, we were in this situation before when the state came in. It wasn't called a CSI at that time, it was called something a little different, but had the same philosophy. If you drop below five percent of a Title I school, which we are, a Title I school, then you would be mandatory to be in this program by the state. I'm not exactly sure, I'm still working on some of these scores, there are a lot of scores to filter through, but we're around fifteen percent, I guess. I don't know if there's ten or twelve schools below us to get into school and poorly. Anyways, I talked with Judy about this, and we went over some of the scores and some of the programs. That's where some of my initial information came from. And I asked Judy if we could, you know, get into this CSI program, you know, if you just volunteer for it maybe. So anyways, I, you know, Judy said, hey, any help we can get is good, good for us. I think we can always use help. So I called up the Department of Education and said, no, you can't get in this. Every, every school would want to get into this, if they could, because it's a very, it's a great resource to have, and we can't afford to do that. But as a school, you can do this on your own. And that is what the Department of Education suggested in our situation, and we actually did. So this isn't my idea, okay? It's the Department of Education's suggestion, if we want to pursue this avenue, to go ahead and contract the services ourselves, which, which I am, of course, in support of. So I contacted the Demonstrated Success, I talked to the president over there, and, you know, they sent me over the literature, and we talked about the program a little bit. Be volunteered to talk to this board, you know, and explain what the program is, what's, what's going on. Be volunteered to talk to the principal as to what they can provide for you, for your teachers, to make them as effective as possible. And, you know, I think as a parent, you know, I would also like something like that. You can tailor this proposal any way you want. If you want them to come in here and tell you the results of that, to help provide you with oversight as to what they're doing, they're happy to do that. They work for you. Okay? So we can tailor this program any way we want to. So without getting too much into the weeds on this, that's my proposal. Now, like I said, they can tailor this if they want to do it on COVID or remote learning. If you want to focus on that, they can do that. They have a case study in which they, in here in New Hampshire, is a five-year program, mind you, that they had a school much lower ranked than us, they're ranked two seventy-six, and one of the programs down there ranked second in the state, which is, which is quite phenomenal. And I think in here, I also have some test scores of a student showing, you know, for, for reading a negative growth, not a negative growth rate, but a zero percent growth rate, and I contribute that to COVID, and then I'm mad that same student got an eighty-five percent growth rate. And that was due to having Zern being taught at home. So I think the reason why I include that is, first off, it's, it's the first test results I've seen. And I know I seen recently in the newsletter that was, when I was leaving, I saw the school put out a newsletter that most of testing is done for the fall, and I assume, I don't know, I assume we're all going to get reports back with COVID, what happened, but, you know, at least this is an initial report that, you know, you know, we didn't get a reading list at home, and then it's something that can be a tool that you can, maybe this, when these guys come in, they can tell us where the shore of our weak spots, but, you know, this is the first case I've seen where something is there, that student actually did better than they would have done in the classroom, at least by the chart. And that's, that's pretty, that's pretty good, you know? So there definitely, when you have an eighty-five percent growth, I think when you take this case study that they have, when they went from two seventy whatever to number two in the state, the results are possible, you know? I know the sample size for me is small, but it reinforces the case study with a real student that goes to this school. So, you know, how you, how you structure the proposal, whether for COVID, better test scores, or just merely for oversight, hey, maybe we're doing everything right, probably not because our test scores are bad, you know? But maybe some of our things are right, and getting that, you know, second look at things, you know, what does it hurt? You know? What's the worst that could happen? You know? I, I don't think, I don't, I personally don't see any downside to this, you know? They'll tell us exactly what our baseline is. They'll tell us how to get from our baseline to where we want to be. You know, tells us exactly how to do that. I think in this proposal, it, it's very thorough. It has, it's broken out into three separate goals. It breaks out, you know, how they're, how they're going to establish their baseline, and, you know, they have, you know, ninety-minute sessions, ten times a year, ten days for the first goal, and five days for the second one, and ten days for the third one, and they're willing to come up here. All, you know, it's, you know, this is not, not close for, for anyone to come to, it's hard to get good help. But they're willing to do it.
Well, that's their job.
What's that?
That's what, that's their job. Of course they'll come up here. They're going to pay thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, you know, I, yeah, I, I, I agree, we are paying them, absolutely, you know? And we definitely need to get our money for it, I think. We will, we will get our money for it. So, you know, again, this is a DOE, Department of Education, recommended approach. We can easily afford to do that, I've seen the budget and the numbers here, it's just something you can afford to. What's the worst that can happen? I don't think there's any downside, I don't see any downside to this proposal. And, you know, as far as this board, the principal, the superintendent, and the parent, I would say, given our best effort, this would be a very, you know, substantial part of doing that. No one accuses us of not trying, you know? And I'm trying to think a little bit outside of the box. That's my proposal.
Thank you, Paul. Does anybody have any questions?
I appreciate all the information, it's helpful when there's so much information. I would, I definitely would like to look into it, I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting. I would want to talk to schools that have done it. Is this the only program like this in New Hampshire?
There are two Department of Education contractors that do this, that's WEF Ed and Demonstrated Success. So there are two contractors that do it. And like I said earlier, they're willing to do a Zoom call or talk to the principal directly and go over the, and I would expect, of course, I wouldn't say, you know, sign a thirty thousand dollar check today, I would say definitely, you know, go into it, explore it, hear the mouth.
Well, yeah, they would have to do a presentation. I mean, again, their willingness to come up here, of course they're willing to come up there and do it, you know? They've got, I'm sure they have a whole presentation that they give, right? You know?
Do we have to do a comparison bid with the other people too, because it's so much, or, I don't, I don't know the technical part of that, as far as the board goes?
I think we're too early to make that, I mean, if we decide.
Well, that's just my curiosity.
Oh, of course, yeah, if we did something like that, we would, we could follow the policy and put it out to bid.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah. Anybody else? Thank you, Paul, I do appreciate your time, I appreciate the information. I think the, the timing is right with our testing just being completed, I think last week or, or a couple of weeks ago, so, you know, testing and scores is something we do talk about at the board level, those will come forward. I did just want to say before, you know, as we close it, you know, I appreciate, there's always room for improvement, but I want to say, when you use SchoolDigger and those assessments, it also, we're also the ninth, ninth high school. So there's, there's things that are going wow. I just don't want people to feel like they're getting bashed, so.
No, and, and I agree, you know, the other, the other schools are doing well, but.
There's always, there's always room for improvement, like you said, right. Yeah, but I don't want, I don't want somebody to hear a number like, geez, we're one ninety-six out of X, when we're actually, you know, we're, we're doing really well as the kids move and grow, and that's what our opportunity is. So thank you again, we will, I think probably, how long does it take before we get the latest testing back?
Um, NWA comes back quite quickly, within a week's time, but the SaaS, we don't really.
We don't have all the results back yet from SaaS, and we have some of them spotted ones.
Right, but, you know, like in the next month or two, we'll be, I'm assuming in the next month, we're at the board meetings, we'll have, is that typically?
Yeah, we'll be reporting January.
Okay.
And is this, are we going to get something similar to what we got last year?
Yes.
This is really helpful.
Right, I'm sure.
Thank you. The, the next item on the agenda is communication correspondence.
Yes, we took correspondence in your packet regarding an email.
Okay.
From Shanahan, that's a correspondence.
Was there, was there anything else?
No, there was none.
Okay. Anybody saw that?
Yes.
Just so the public knows, it was, it was basically an email from a recent article, MUR maybe, regarding children with symptoms to be tested for COVID-19. I'm sure we'll be discussing that later. Business report, Danz.
Yeah, I put in your packets the two thousand nineteen, twenty year-end reports that I normally put in, and I can go through those. I hope you guys have had time to go through them. And we just got through our audit and just submitted all of our year-end reports to the state, so I'd like to give you a little recap. So I give you a summary of the general fund, our major functions and objects, and basically the theme this year is, yes, we have some money that's going back to the towns because we ended our year in March. So we had, you know, we still had expenditures going on, we had, of course, our salaries and benefits that continued, and that's our biggest expense in our budget. But we did have some expenditures that we did not have, like spring sports, things like that. So, you know, I give you a lot of detail, if you have any specific questions, but the biggest thing to me is, a lot of the areas that we had money left over was just because we had a shortened year. So if you have any specific questions, so we ended up, and I think I discussed this at the last meeting, so we had five hundred and thirty-seven thousand in unassigned fund balance, and that looks at all of our expenditures and revenues versus what we budgeted. A hundred thousand goes into our trust funds, a hundred and fifty thousand we're retaining, a two and a half percent that we had talked about a couple of meetings ago, so two hundred and eighty-seven thousand is going back to the towns. And that goes through the tax rate setting process, which we're in the process of now. So once I submit our year-end reports to the state, then we have to resubmit our estimated revenues for the new year, I have to resubmit our, our portionment, which is what town pays for what, once we have our final, well, our budget that was approved, minus our revised revenues, including this money that's going back to the towns. And then they'll re-portion everything to the town so they can set the tax rates. So that's where we are in the whole process. But if you have any specific questions on those.
Does that one fifty, hundred fifty thousand go back into the general?
It, it's just kind of like holding accounts, it's just money we don't send back at this point. Yeah, it's just kind of sitting in our account, more of them.
But if we were to expend any of that money, we would have to.
We have to go to the state and say we want to lose that money.
We have to get approval to use it from the.
Yeah. And a lot, what they're doing now, and I just found this out the other day, is especially for districts that, because we approved to have that retainage law, I don't know, maybe five or six years ago, and it made me think that. And schools that haven't for this year, they can now go to the state and say, well, and, I mean, most of the schools are in the same situation, they had money left at the end of the year. It was due to COVID, but now we have expenditures.
Right.
That we didn't put in this year's budget, that are due to COVID. So the state is allowing, if you write a letter, you know, can we hold back some of that money? Can we retain some of that money right now, just in case? So they are allowing schools to do that. But again, if we need to actually use it, we would have to go to the state, so we have that. I gave you a summary of our food service fund, that's always a big piece of this, and again, the theme is, so, you know, when you look at our daily food sales, it's thirty-nine thousand dollars, it's usually around sixty thousand, that's because we ended school in March. So from March through June, we were feeding students, delivering meals out, but we weren't, it was all free, kind of through the waiver that we got. So a lot of that is recorded in the federal reimbursement. We got reimbursement for those meals, so we, we didn't, we lost out on about twenty thousand dollars worth of food sales that we would normally have just from regular food operations. So again, we ended up, I mean, we normally need to, that, that fund does not stand alone, you know, it's not a standalone operation, we usually have to fund any deficits from our general fund, and, and again, that was higher than normal, mainly because of that loss of revenue that lost three months of school. So again, the same thing that continued, that we saw in our general fund, we saw in our lunch fund. I also provide you with our trust funds, just so you can see where our trust fund balances are. So I gave you where we ended two thousand nineteen, twenty, with all the expenditures, and, and then I gave you kind of a glimpse of where we are now. I have not actually efficiently deposited that money in, so you have the twenty twenty-one, so your starting balance, we will, we will be putting the hundred thousand dollars into the various trust funds, and just some of the money that we've expended or allocated so far. So we still have, if you're looking at the two thousand twenty, twenty-one trust fund report that I gave you, the heating system, architect fees that were allocated last year, we had voted thirty thousand, we spent eighteen thousand, we still have twelve thousand of backups for the elementary system. And then the infrastructure grant, which I need to close out those reports by the end of December, but that was that twenty percent match that we had to do for any, like we had radios, we had the phone system that we're, we have in this year, so once we close that out, there will be a little bit more money coming out of that. And then we, we have that fitness room equipment so far this year. So we have some pretty good balances right now in some of those accounts, as we're looking towards the new year, the next year's budget, and any projects coming up. And then the last two reports I give you every year, it's reports that come out of the year-end reports that I do for the state, so it's just our school district profile. Again, to me, it's just kind of like, okay, how, you know, have things changed drastically? But, so it compares two thousand eighteen, nineteen actual versus two thousand nineteen, twenty actual, and it, you know, we did spend less money when you look at, I look at number one, that they, the percentages, to see, you know, regular ed, yes, forty-five percent of our budget, special ed, it's thirteen percent of our budget. So those percentages really don't change, unless we have some new initiative or something really big change in our budget. But the total dollars, which I thought was quite interesting, when you look at our expenditures for two thousand nineteen, twenty, the actual expenditures was seven thousand six, seven million six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, but the total recurring expenditures line there. And the prior year, it was seven million seven hundred and sixty-six thousand. So again, and that's why we're sending so much money back to the towns, we did not spend our budget, because the way the year ended. We did have a big capital project last year with the, with the science room. And then our revenues are pretty much the same, most of our revenues comes from our property taxes here. So that's what I have for last year's reports. If you have any questions, just let me know. I also had put, yeah, so again, I just went through, we also, I put in your packet that we are starting our twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget process, so you have that schedule pretty much follows our, so right now, the teachers are working on their budgets, and they'll be submitting to the administration, and then the administration will start looking at those budgets beginning in November, and then they'll be putting together the budget, and then you guys will start looking at it along with the budget committee in December. So that's going on right now. And just one thing that's come in on next year's budget so far, which is quite interesting, so we, we see New Hampshire retirement rates for the next two years, so those are set every two years. So those have gone up quite a bit, and I just did some quick figuring, because, so New Hampshire retirement is funded by, the employer has a rate that they pay, and they keep that rate the same for two years. And then employees also pay into that too, but, so if we took last year's salaries with the current rate rates and then the new rates, because the teachers group, there's two pools, the teachers group is going from seventeen point eight percent of the wages to twenty-one percent, and the employee group, which is all the rest of the employees, is going from eleven point one seven percent to fourteen percent. If you take those and just apply them against last year's wages, it's a hundred and seven thousand dollar increase. If we will see that impact as we're putting together the budget for next year, that's with no other changes, so.
I mean, technically, that money goes back into your pocket to retirement though, correct, or?
Well, the, how New Hampshire retirement is funded, it's funded by employees.
And she's.
Employees pay seven percent, and the employer pays whatever rate. The state used to kick in, but they don't anymore, so those rates have gone up, and that goes into a pool. So when someone retires, it's a base standard defined formula. So, but that's how it funds all the retirements. And I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Danz, you've been busy.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Superintendent's report, Judy.
Okay, so you have, you did have a policy committee meeting this evening in Becker's, so Jay, people will know what happened in your committee meeting. Negotiations, we will be, the board will be going to a non-meeting after the end of the board reading to go over some components of negotiations that the team is going to need prior to going to their first session on the twenty-second of October. The tents are now in place, and they are able to be used. They just, at the beginning of this week, everything went through with the state bio-martial and the bio-chief, so everything is in order, and we will have them until the beginning of November. The budget committee will be meeting, the meeting was just changed, it will be on Thursday, the fifteenth, at six o'clock.
So tomorrow? That's the budget committee, who is our representative?
Yeah.
And so I, maybe you're about to say it, never mind, go ahead.
Okay, so that will, they'll be meeting tomorrow. They're just going to have an organizational meeting, and they're not, we're not going to be there, because we're just finishing giving the information to the board, so we will be preparing for the information to be presented to the budget committee typically. The budget committee first meets in November with the SAU office, and we will go over, you know, we go over, just went over it this evening, and then, you know, schedule meetings, let them know of the meetings that we are having. And then, you know, schedule meetings and let them know of the meetings that we are having. Uh, that will still happen, uh, in the beginning of November because that's when we'll have everything ready to present to the budget committee. And that's, that's the process. So that's what we will be, we will be doing.
We need budget committee members.
So yeah, budget committee, you know, your budget committee is made up of, of course, seven people and seven members. And right now you have three members and the fourth member is your, your board member. Right, so no one can be absent from a meeting. So if anyone's absent, then they can't have a meeting. So they do need the four.
Is this the second year in a row that we haven't had enough budget members where we had to go to the public?
Correct.
Those elected positions?
Yeah, you're correct. And in March, you will have.
I think it's every year.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. I didn't.
I'm just trying to figure out how many years in a row we haven't had enough people run for those positions.
And isn't it not, this isn't a mandatory? I think it's, it's great. But.
Currently have four budget committee members open these.
Okay.
Because technically the board member should be the eighth voting member.
Right.
Uh, you have a, a funding formula, a letter went out to the select boards of both communities. That was in your packet as well. That was sent out electronically as well as, um, hard copy. Uh, again, Doug just went over the budget process and how that has begun. Um, we did, uh, have a safety committee meeting this past week. And the emergency operation plan and the COVID operational plan, um, will be reviewed with the committee. There were some good, um, observations and some, uh, good ideas as to how to, um, revise some of those, uh, components in, in both plans. Uh, I did have a tech committee scheduled for the fourteenth, which was today. However, we did have to change that and we will be having it on the twenty ninth at two forty five. And that will be in this room as well. Uh, facilities committee meeting minutes are, are in the packet. Those, those minutes have gone over, Brian went over those at the last board meeting. So I just, I just put them in the, uh, packet, um, for your review. Uh, the professional development committee will be meeting on the twentieth, um, for the first time at two forty five. I'm not sure who's on that professional development, and I can't remember, I'll have to look. But that's at two forty five.
What is that for? I'm sorry.
Professional development.
Yeah. Oh, man. Okay, let me see. We also received a copy of the high school schedule. This is typically the time that we, uh, the numbers come in that, you know, are now steady. So those are the actual numbers of the, of the class sizes of high school nineteen twelve. Uh, let's see, the tents. Um, the pipe project again is still in the, in the state's hands. All this documentation went back to the state from the engineers and now it is, uh, they're reviewing it. Um, mechanical services will be, um, assessing the equality in December. And then there is a date, a specific date that they will be coming in. They did, and they're now scheduling their, um, assessments in December. So we're, we were on a December list. Uh, let's see. Okay, uh, the rest can be done at the, uh, the, the next part of the agenda.
Any questions?
How many students do we have? You guys know this.
I'm busy now.
Okay.
Judy, I had a quick question. Um, when we last met, it was three weeks ago in Dirk facilities, we were talking about the, the oil tank project and stuff like that. You know, we're a little behind, but it was, it clear that we've submitted our paperwork and it comes back with requests on the state's part to, to tweak it. And I just didn't know, I know at that point we were still waiting to hear back. Have we heard anything yet?
No, that's what I had just, I had just recorded on that, but they are, it's still in their hands. And, um, I have a, a reminder out to them and, um, I'll say what.
But they haven't given us, I mean, they haven't given us any, we don't know, right?
Right.
Now the fine.
So we're keeping documentation.
Okay. Because I know last year that was like a huge deal.
Right.
And now all of a sudden, it doesn't seem to be super important.
Well, what the fines, are we still getting fined for it? Are they accruing?
I can't imagine, I mean, Judy answered that, but I can't imagine if we made legitimate efforts to.
Okay.
You know, we'd agree.
We have everything documented and, and following through with every, every request that the state has asked for.
Okay, that's where I was going because I was curious about the same thing, like.
We haven't been fined.
Right.
Joe said we still getting fined. We haven't been fined. I didn't say we were getting fined.
Oh, no, you said we still getting fined.
No, are we? Yeah, we, we never were.
Well, there was a, there was a report last year that.
A discussion, eventually would have happened. I'm just clearing it up that we're not paying fines.
They were keeping tabs. They were keeping tabs in, in excess of twenty thousand dollars at the time.
That's why I asked.
About a year ago.
I haven't heard a thing.
What do you mean?
Since that meeting, I haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah, we haven't came anything out, right?
No.
I should want them to come back and say, oh my God, at the end of the year, you guys haven't done anything when we've clearly, you know, submitted our proposals and they keep sending them back. Okay.
Anything else? Mark, principals report.
Great, um, good evening. Um, we have two hundred eighty eight students in this school, if it's not for both schools. Twenty five new students, um, eight in the middle high school and seventeen in the elementary. Um, we currently have twenty students doing online or distance learning of some sort. The high school, you know, they have eighty five kids, middle school seventy four, elementary a hundred twenty nine. Uh, our largest classes are, um, tenth grade with twenty six, eighth grade with thirty two and fifth grade with twenty six. There must have been something in the water that year. Every time we get new kids, it just seems to be a bit greater. But, you know, despite that, with all the kids here, I, I, I can say that, you know, they seem to be adjusting very smoothly. Um, maybe too smooth for some people, but, um, they're adjusting well. I haven't had any, um, COVID related behavioral issues, um, with kids as far as masks and, but they are kids, right? And they're creatures and their ha, their habits are to touch and to get close and to talk and do all those kind of things a, a, at close proximity. So we are still working on that, still working on keeping them separated as best we can. Um, but you know what? They, they need the emotional, that physical attention and it's, it's hard to break and I, you know, I don't necessarily want to. But, you know, it's still constant reminders and they live up to it. They're not, they're not necessarily bucking that at all. Um, we find they seem to be, um, fully staffed with, um, custodians and our bus drivers.
Maybe we have recommendations working?
Okay, we'll recommend that tonight. Um, um, does not mean that we're not, um, needing of some other pieces in play, especially when we look at, um, you know, those kids that are distance learning. I don't know, uh, there's conversations we probably should have about that. Um, the, yeah, and, yep, and then the A C T testing and the P S A T testing that happened today. Um, and the kids who had, the middle school had, um, their trial run at, at a, at a scheduled distance learning opportunity. I think we had some mixed reviews on that. Um, some kids did really well. I, I know that, um, I heard from our specials teacher who said everybody showed up, they did all the work they were supposed to do at that day. It was great. And then we had some other middle school teachers who, who, I, they had high expectations, you know? And we're used to meeting online and saying, um, hey, how are you doing? I'm just checking in. And, and now when we have that opportunity to meet based on a, a schedule in which there's instruction that's needs to happen and will happen, kids don't necessarily adhere to that. And so, you know, you have, you have those opportunities to teach. And when we come back tomorrow, we're going to have discussions as to what's the expectation again of, of if we do the online learning, how does that work? I did run into a parent today, um, who's, who thought the middle school online exercise went really well. She thought her children were, were able to do everything they're asked to do, that adequate amount of time with the teacher. And we thought they had an adequate amount of time with the students to get the work that they needed. So she said that they had fun actually. So I was, I was happy about that. Um, but it, it looks like, it, it looks like when the kids are online, we just need to have more opportunities to instruct them on what our expectations are. It's just going to be one of those things, you know, over and over and over again. It's not, you can never tell a kid once and get perfect results. I think all of you can probably attest to that. So it's just getting habits while they're online, if indeed we do. However, I don't feel like we have that, that need. Um, let's see, um, oh, and the A C T testing, the P S A T testing, that portion of it went, went really well. And I'm not sure how long it takes to get those results back, I can imagine, because it's paper pencil. Instead of the digital stuff, we're going to be waiting for a while. Um, and, um, I don't really have too much more to report. I think things are running pretty smooth, honestly. And, um, just seems to be working right now. So I'm really thankful that I have the, the teachers and staff that I have right now. And they're willing to do whatever it needs to be done to get things moving smoothly here. So hats, hats off to them as well.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, Mark, you said two hundred eighty eight, is that the number?
Correct.
Um, when you said twenty distance, is that part of the two eighty eight or is that an additional twenty?
Yeah, it's part of the, it's part of the same, that two eighty.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Matt, could I just add one, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one more thing. I wanted to get into the minutes. So it's at the, uh, in, high school interactive club had, it was Doug, Doug Morehead and, uh, along with Candy Long and you and a Spartan have, um, made available picnic tables for the students. Let's say thank you for them.
Well, thank you to the interactive club and Rotary for doing that.
With, with the additional size of some of those classrooms, do we have any problems with the social distancing in the classrooms now? That everybody's still okay with?
I just wanted to say, um, the online, like, distance learning piece, it, it, um, I think our efforts, you know, and we might be forced to do it and, um, you know, but e, e, even the efforts that we're doing right now, I think it's great that you guys are testing it out and it's helpful, it will be helpful to the kids in the future. Um, a lot of college is offered online and even when I was in school and underground and dad's school, you know, some, some adults are, it, it's easy for them. And I had two little kids, so it was ideal for me, but it was, it posed its challenges. And, and I had, um, you know, peers that would not take any online courses. They couldn't stand it. So I think that it's, you know, one of the positives takeaway from this experience that, um, after our education is, a lot of it is online and, and giving the kids these skills right now to, uh, you know, time management and how to, uh, navigate that and, and keep your attention and all, and all of that. So I think it's a, will help them out down the road too.
Yeah, and actually, I don't know if you recall this or not, but prior to, prior to all this, uh, you know, distance learning stuff happening at the end of last year, that the, the district does have a requirement that a student needs to take an online class or a graduate.
I guess I know that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This group's covered.
Yes.
Exactly, exactly. And, and actually, you know, um, Chris and Clay and I talked about, you know, waivers for that depending upon, you, you know, how much time and effort that we actually have to do using, using those classrooms.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that there should be some sort of qualification for that. I, I'm sure in the past it's been accredited through like V L A S C or something like that.
Yeah.
Where a lot of these kids have done quite a bit of work already.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, policy committee.
Uh, we met this evening, uh, went over a few policies that, uh, we were being asked to review, uh, that we're going to be presenting for our first reading next week.
Okay.
Uh, you'll get a copy of the, um, you know, what, the changes we've made or, or options that we've selected as part of those policies before the meeting to review. And then we can have a short, short discussion about them, but they're nothing groundbreaking. Um, just some stuff that we need that we didn't have previously. So that's been pretty much it. Nothing further's any on for any reading during this meeting.
Okay. Did, no other committees have met since last, right? Other than.
No.
Um, the negotiation team, which we'll hear from later.
Right.
Staff nominations, recommendations, resignation.
I do have a recommendation for, for Mr. Mike Hartnett. Uh, for custodial services, four hours per night. And that will begin October fifteenth.
You don't need any board action for that, right?
I'm sorry?
You don't need any board action for that?
I, recommendation, yes.
Oh, you do, okay. I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of Mike Hartnett for four hours custodial.
I'll second.
Four hours a night custodial. Are you on a second, Joe?
Yes, I'll second, yep.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All in favor, please signify a stay tonight.
Aye, aye.
Posnay, abstentions, and that motion carries. Continuing business, right?
I have, I do have a nomination.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, Lynn Murray for the nurses position. Lynn did work, work with the district last year and, uh, as a contracted service. And now she will be an employee of the district. Comes with many years of experience.
Okay.
I, I would actually like to ask to go non-public regarding this nomination. Can we do that? Can we put this opposite in the meeting and do that?
Would you want to?
Or can we do that now? We could do it, I mean, either way, whatever's easier, I would just, you know.
We can go in at the end of the meeting.
Why don't we do, yeah, do it at the end, so if.
And then come out and go.
Okay. So we'll move that back. Any others?
No, that's it.
The next item is the right of way.
Yes, the right of way, um, there is a deed. It's not in your packet, but it is in your packet.
Yep. So from the, from the last conversations we had about this, we went from a right of way to a license, which would be, which would follow any precedent that was set in the past and would send us all of that information. Um, and seeing in your, in your notes, you had a conversation with O J.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, who, O J Robinson, the chair of, um, the Lincoln Board, uh, Select Board. And he, what was it that he said? He said that this is the only double lot over there, so we shouldn't be concerned with others asking?
Yes, that was a concern that was brought up by, by board members. And so I, I reviewed that concern with O J. And he said the other, there's three lots. That's the one, that's the double lot. The other two are single lots and already got access to School Street. So, um, this would be the only one that does not have, the first lot has access, but the other lot does not have access to any outside road.
I, I would just add that based on my conversation with, with Judy last week and, um, information that we got from the school's attorney, uh, and also just reviewing what we did, uh, with the house that's at the end of the path up by the elementary school, is not an easement. So there was, it was a little bit of confusion because what we granted to the town at the end of Pleasant Street was an actual easement.
Correct.
My understanding is that that easement was something that was granted by the board to the town. But in fact, should, should have gone to the school district meeting, which sounded like, if that's the case, we, we need to do something about that potentially. That, that this, that the, if we're going to be granting an easement, which is a property interest, we need to be, that has to go through the, the town, the voters at the school district meeting. Um, but it doesn't seem like that original easement did. But the turnaround.
The two thousand and seven.
For the turnaround. Correct. Right, yep. Not that, 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 I think would ever become an issue, but that's just, you know, logistically, if we're doing it, we should be doing it right, I guess.
And what, Jay, I'm sorry, where did that come from?
That was from this, the, that was the school's attorney. Was that, that if, if we're going to be granting an easement, you know, basically giving away school property of, or rights to school property, that has to go through the, the district meeting.
Makes sense.
Um, the second thing was, what we granted to the folks up at the end of the path there was a license, which essentially was just formal permission that's revocable at any time by the school board. So if we decided that, you know, we just didn't want them to use that, they. So if we decided that, you know, we just didn't want them to use that anymore, we can take that away and they have no recourse. I'm, I'm certain that's not what Ms. Haradine is anticipating getting for that property, because it would still not be saleable if that was the case, if there wasn't a, if there wasn't.
You couldn't put a structure there if we couldn't just?
Right, exactly. No one would buy it anyway if that was the case. So I think if we were going to grant her a true easement to access that property, that we couldn't, it sounds like we can't do that, that, that would have to go through voters as a special.
You could give her a license like you did the other.
Yeah, we could give her a license, but I don't think that that's gonna accomplish what she wants it to accomplish, or what she's looking to accomplish.
So would the, the board be inclined to provide a license? But if she wants an easement, and this will be a conversation you'll have to have with her, if she wants an easement, then she needs to go through the process of getting it on the warrant, correct?
Yeah, I think that that's the, that sounds like what, what the guidance from the attorney was, yes.
Yeah, right. What you've done in the past with these types of requests, you've gone with, from what records that I've been able to research, you've, you've gone with licenses.
Right, yep.
And, and, but the board has granted the license. Can another, can another new board change that? Yeah, they can.
But those licenses, I mean, it sounds like those other properties were reachable by other means. So if someone built on the property and revoked the license, they could still access the property. But this one, she wants to access a part of the property that she can't from that little road. So a license is not gonna do anything, right?
Right, so, so there's no?
I'd be hesitant to tell her, hey, you can have a license now, unless she fully understands that.
Yeah, there has to be an education.
Well, yeah.
If you look at the, I mean, we could give her a, the copy of what we, it's the Schaefer's, which is, I'm sorry, Schlefer's, are the, the folks that have the license of Paula Road.
Right.
And, you know, paragraph nine says this license may be terminated by the school board at any time, so with, without cause. So, you know, if, if she's satisfied with that, then, then that's, you know.
I'm afraid she might be not knowing that it means?
Right.
The limit to her rights with the property, you know?
I, I don't think it's hard, so, I, I don't want this to sound short, but I don't think it's hard. I mean, I think, it's gonna have to be an educational component to the information that Judy gives to Ms. Haradine about, hey, this is, this is the precedence that's been set by the school boards. In the past, we've done the license, and even, you know, highlight or read to her that private, that paragraph nine that says it's revocable at any time without cause. The school board is willing to do that. But if that's not what you're looking for, the process to follow for an easement is to go and get, get it on the warrant, so that the town people can vote for it. And then it's in her hands.
It should be specific like that, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, we just have to educate her on the difference. And then she can, she needs to do her due diligence to figure out which direction she wants to go.
Okay.
Yeah?
And that, and, I mean, that's consistent with the guidance from the attorney, right? I mean, that, I think that's basically my understanding.
Those are the two choices.
Okay, yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm on forward with that.
Yeah, we just, I mean, that's, we have to follow the precedence that we've set.
Yeah, that's good.
Next item under continuing business is school funding formula. We haven't, the letters have gone out, but we haven't heard back.
Oh, can I just step back to one thing? Can you just confirm with the attorney that we don't need to readdress that original easement in some fashion? Because if he's telling us that right now, we can't, the board can't grant an easement, and that has to go through the town, then at some point, we should probably address putting it on the warrant article for the next, put it on the warrant article and to formally grant that easement legally, because right now it doesn't look like it is.
Right.
So just, I mean, if we can confirm that that's actually something that's, might be necessary, we can get it on for this year.
The next item under continuing business, not on the agenda, but it was an oversight, is COVID-nineteen.
Yes.
So I don't, you know, I think it's something that needs to remain on the, on the agenda and?
It is a mistake, but it's not on the agenda.
No, I know, we talked about, that's right, yeah. So at least this, we have an opportunity to hear any updates if anything's changed from you, and then, you know, feel any questions from the board. So I don't know, you talked about it a little bit in the, I don't know if there's any other major updates other than the tents and?
Yeah, we do have a meeting.
Okay.
First of all, I just want to let the board know that we do continue to update the website. Anything that continues to come up through DHHS and CDC, we are consistently putting it on the website under COVID and adding that information. So we just recently added some stuff that, that was pertinent to some concerns that everyone had regarding the process and procedure the school district was using in order to identify students who should be sent home and get tested. We did go through CDC and we did go through DHHS and we did find a, actually, it's in the newsletter. It's a little poster, miniature poster that went home.
Yeah.
Very, it's, you know, you can really understand it. And it really got into the, the symptoms that are not new. It explained those types of symptoms, because some of those symptoms are, are real, the new symptoms. And the new symptoms are the ones where students will be sent home and, and whatnot. The, the process that we use, it's a process in which DHHS and Dr. Chang recommends, Shan recommends. And that is, we have to look at the medical records of each child. So when a child comes to the, to the nurse and says they don't feel well, the nurse goes into the medical record, has doctor's documentation, not just parents, has have to have doctor's prescriptions and doctor's documentations on what medical issues each child has. And it's documented in the environment. So when you have a student come, in this situation, it's very important to get that documentation. So when this child does come to the nurse's office, they follow the process. And if there's doctor's documentation on some type of a precondition medical situation, then that is put into the equation. All parents are called when they are sent to the office, when their child is, not when the parents are, when the, when the child is sent to the nurse's office for the concerns. But that, I mean, like I said, everything is, we tried to clarify that in the document that went home to the parents, and we are stressing to the parents. If, if anyone is not, any child is not feeling well in the morning, to have them stay home. Doesn't mean that they had COVID, but it just, they could be vulnerable to something, and they could have some type of a flu. So just keep them home and see, you know, if they're feeling better the next day. One day is, you know, it may not be anything, and the next day they're fine, and that's okay. But, but just to keep them home when they're not feeling well.
And that honestly might be easier for some folks, too, because if your child is sent home, then you either have to produce a negative test or wait ten days, according to that, according to that, you know, handout. So if you, if you don't want to get them tested for some reason, you potentially have to have your child home for ten days. So if they have a mild symptom or, or, you know, some common symptoms, keeping them home for a day or two might be a better option.
So we are watching that very carefully.
It might be helpful to add, too, I know on the website, there was information from mid-state Plymouth. They have the rapid test. Convenient MD in Littleton now has it available, I think as of, as of today or yesterday. So there's two options within a half hour drive to get a test result within twenty minutes.
What happened?
What's that?
Pediatrics as well.
They have the rapid also, okay. So that, you know, the concerns about having to wait seven days, if you do have symptoms, to get your result back, is if a child's sent home now, they could, you know, they can, a parent can make a phone call, set up an appointment, you don't get out of your car, you drive in, they come out, do, you know, take all your information, give you the test, and, you know, for us, we had it back within twenty minutes, so.
Okay, that's good. We'll add that to the website.
Yeah.
Yes, the state rolls out more of those tests, there's more.
Yeah, it seems like there's more and more coming in, so.
Okay, the elementary is, is looking at using a day to, to remote learning, as, as the middle school did. We are looking at November third.
Could you say that again, I missed it, sorry? The, the elementary school?
Elementary school will be doing a remote learning day. We're looking at November third for that.
That's election day?
Yeah.
Good idea.
Also, due to the numbers of the remote learners, we're at now at twenty, the administrative team was just discussing looking at a distance facilitator to see if they can oversee the students and see, you know, make sure that they're on, on task and online when they need to be online, and, and, you know, do some further digging when they need to. And if they need support, go back to the classroom teacher and get the support needed, so that the student can continue to live a lesson.
That's a good idea. I hear that that's been helpful in other districts.
A lot of the other districts in the North Country are doing that, and that seems to help, takes the burden off the classroom teacher.
Because there, there are so many challenges with, again, you know, even adult learners struggle with online learning, and it's, so that's great.
And sometimes it could be just a technology card, you know?
Absolutely, yeah.
And so you just don't know, so we're looking into?
Explain to me again, what, what's the, like, what's the, what's, not the whole job description, but what is, what's involved with the facilitator?
Yeah, so a lot of it?
Is it somebody in-house or somebody outside?
What's that?
Is it somebody in-house or somebody outside?
I, I think we have to open it up.
Yeah, okay.
We have to, based on contract, we have to open it up to in-house and then outside, right? We have, that's typically how it works. But what we're looking at is somebody to facilitate between student, what, what they're learning based on like either Google Classroom or Play-Doh or direct instruction. It might be somebody that has to give a couple of lessons a week to individual students, say kindergarten, first grade, second grade. Those kids who don't have a, a really easy time at learning with something like a online platform like Play-Doh or something. So looking at facilitating between that, meaning conversations with parents, conversations with teachers, the kind of, kind of the middleman to how things are run in the classroom and how things need to be progressing at home. It, it could be monitoring our Play-Doh capacities that we have right now. Remember, that's, that's kind of like a recovery system and kind of like V-LAS, maybe not as intense as V-LAS, but a little more of a recovery system that we're using to supplement for kids who want to be home. So operating that, knowing when kids have to retest, knowing when kids have to move on to the next unit, setting them people, them up, having conversations on a weekly basis. I think that would be really helpful, because right now it's, it's very taxing on the people that are doing that, which, which is basically showing Quinn. You know, so he's got a lot going on his plate just at school. Now you send twenty people, you know, at home to learn and try to keep up with them, it's, it's pretty challenging. Remember when we first started this, there was five kids.
Yeah.
Five, and, you know, a month after, later, we're at, we're at twenty.
Yeah.
So I, um, their job is gonna be all encompassing to the things that I just talked about. We're continuing to refine what that, what that description looks like.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Is that it for the COVID updates? Because I think, I, I think we need to address what is included in Tammy's correspondence. And I'll, I'll add that I've been hearing similar things. You know, people voicing concerns that kids that are showing new symptoms, it's similar to what the guidance is that we're handing out, that are being sent to the nurse and then sent back to class. And to the extent that, that DHHS has been involved with the, with the school. So the, you know, sort of the shortcomings of, of us, seemingly not upholding the policies are getting to the point where, where the state agencies are, are having to get involved and check in with the school to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. But we have a pretty clearly delineated plan. You know, what was presented to the school was that any child that was exhibiting any of these symptoms was going to be addressed in a specific way, and it doesn't seem like that's happening.
Well, it's, it's any child with new symptoms.
Well?
And, and I, and I have to go with that, because there have been times when, when the nurse has, has called the parent and has actually talked to doctors, they, they have given the nurse, yes, this is what it is, and that, and, you know, on this is the way, the route you need to go. When the nurse has questions, they call, she calls DHHS or CDC, or Dr. Chan's office and, and, and gets direction, because they're very good at, you know, you know, they're very supportive. The state is very supportive. So she, she is calling when there is a situation where it's not clear.
Well, I, to be specific, I, my understanding and what I've heard from folks is that there's been specific incidences with, with things like kids that have developed coughs or kids that have developed feverish type symptoms, kids that have, have developed diarrhea type symptoms that are not being sent home. And, and so those are the types of things that are, that are, that can be classified as not new symptoms. I mean, you don't have, unless you have some sort of chronic IBS, you're not gonna have a diarrhea as a not a new symptom. So, you know, the concern in, in, this is not, this is throughout the community.
You gotta take a medication that gives you?
There's, sure. That may be true, but the, until that, that, you know, until we, you can positively identify that this symptom is not COVID, the policy is that they're supposed to be sent home. So if they're having a symptom, that may be attributable to, to non-COVID, most likely they are. We need to be erring on the side of caution. We need to be dealing with them as if they are COVID. I mean, that was the whole discussion throughout the reopening plan, the reopening process, was that this is going to cause some inconvenience for folks. We are going to be dealing with kids that have colds, that have flu symptoms, cold symptoms, because that just happens in this, in this environment. But we have to be treating each one of them as if it is COVID until it can be shown that it's not, because we can't afford to have an outbreak in the school. We have it in the community now, there's an active case currently here in Lincoln. There's, there is, the last three weekends have been an absolute madhouse in town. And so there's guaranteed to be more that we don't know about. And so it just seems like we need to be making sure that we are erring on the side of caution as opposed to, you know, as opposed to the opposite, which it seems like, or at least some reports indicate that that's what's happening. Sending kids back to class that shouldn't be sent back to class.
I also have a question on these reports, because I just keep hearing this, like, hearsay that, that it's not happening.
Sure.
And I just want to say that my daughter was sent home today because she has a bellyache. Penelope has a bellyache, if she doesn't want to do, you know, she's a, she's an eight-year-old. And, great, I'll come get her. She has a bellyache. She went to the nurse with the bellyache, they gave her medication. An hour later, she didn't feel better, and the nurse called me and said, you need to come pick her up according to our policy, you know, she didn't get better with meds, and this is a new, you know, this is a new thing, and, and you need to come pick her up. So now she has to stay home until she produces a positive test, or if I just want to keep her home for ten days, which, that's what she asked for, obviously, but. But I want to know more about, I mean, we can't.
To be fair, I don't think that we can get into specific.
We would be very, very careful.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, we can't get into.
So I just want to, I mean?
I, I'd be happy to share with you the information that I have in a session where, where it's not a risk of, of.
And my concern?
I guess we can add that to the, to the.
And my concern is that this information is out there. Because you're talking individuals here, and you're talking about their medical?
Right.
Conditions.
Well, I mean, we can't stop the community from talking about what's happening in their kids' classrooms or in their, to their children, or, you know, they're gonna do that.
But we can stop it as a board, you can stop it here.
Yeah.
Well, right, I mean, that was the plan. And I was not offering any more specific information about.
Do we document everything as?
Every little thing is documented, everything.
And we document as the kids come in, everybody's healthy and all that, that's all? Okay.
Yep.
So there's a paper trail for everything then?
Yeah.
So we'll know what new symptoms?
And I do have another question about it, but I'll save it for non-public.
Okay. Anything else general about COVID? Recognition of visits, actually, before we move on, the, the point about it being election day for remote learning, I think, I?
I do have a question.
What's that?
I do have a question on that one, you're done.
I, I don't know that that's the best use, that's the best day to select, and it may be convenient for us. Did we use the school for the voting at all?
No.
No?
Not for them.
My concern would be that some parents, or a great portion of parents, work at night, and they may use their daytime to go ahead and vote. So I would just like you to look into it, reconsider it, a different day. I do like the idea of having a regular schedule of, of having these days for each school, just to go home and to do it and to practice it, so that, you know, if, if, if it does come to, to remote learning, that people are comfortable, so.
And that November third day off, is that included with partner program, too?
Now that November 3rd day off, is that included the partner program?
It's not a day off.
Well, no, but I mean, off property, is it?
I don't know if the, if the partner program's going to do it at home or not, I'd like to look into that.
Well, the teachers would be teaching from here.
The teachers teaching from the school. The teachers are in.
Right, so the remote, the, the children are remote, but the teachers are here.
Okay, the partner program would continue to work. The students would, for those, for that group, would come to the school.
Okay. Definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, we will look into it differently.
I have a totally unrelated question, if that's, if that's okay. What year are we in with the partner program? This is the 30th year?
It's the 30th year.
This is 30, yeah, 30.
So maybe we should put that on an agenda at some point to talk about what we're going to do with that.
It's a three-year contract?
It's three years.
Yeah.
It's an annual contract.
It's an annual contract.
I thought it was a three-year.
No, they said usually it takes about three years, and then they can usually set everything up so that the infrastructure.
Yeah, I think they presented it as a multi-year plan.
Right, the average is, yeah.
But it may be time for, I mean, we'd like to hear a presentation.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Staff, Rebecca, welcome.
Oh, thank you. I just want to note that we were given board minutes from a meeting for something we talked about, and it was from.
UBS.
It was.
2007.
It was from 2007, and you were nominated for the middle school science position. So thank you for your years of service and.
Welcome back, Rebecca. Here I am still.
Thank you.
Nice.
Good job.
Yeah.
Just one thing to share from the music department. They continue to work at getting to a point where students can safely learn and create music together. We remain very cautious, but we'll adjust as we learn more about the airflow of the species we are in and what is the best practice for each group. With that said, Mr. Entersi and a few parent volunteers have put together bell covers for lame instruments. We have also purchased face masks, allowing players to put their mouthpiece through a slit with a mask. The most challenging instrument to work with is the flute. Mr. Entersi researched and acquired a plan for the rights to reproduce a flute mask. And with collaboration with Mr. Webster, members of the computer program in class have pre-printed a workable model. The benefit of the design is it allows the player to blow the flute in a natural manner with aerosol staying within the mask. Many of the other options, commercial or other DUI line for flute, have simply redirected the airflow and ultimately aerosol around some form of shield. It takes close to a school, full school day to put the parts for each mask. Mr. Entersi must then adjust and assemble each piece. As of today, two have been assembled. Sincerely, Tom Entersi and Mark Rethel. Amen.
Cool.
Sample.
Oh, neat.
So, I think three different pieces, you said, and then you kind of assemble through different elastic rubber bands or different positions, and then goes on the piece that you can go through it with.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Community. Well, at this time, I would like to poll the board to go into non-public pursuant to RSA 91-8, calling three discussions of matters that are likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. Brian.
Yes.
Vance. I'm a yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yes, yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.